This is the Thursday, September seventeen, twenty twenty meeting of the Franklin Township zoning board of adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of a state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. It has been, it has been determined that the public's attendance at public meetings of the Franklin Township zoning board of adjustment would pose a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. As a result, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the State of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of zoning board of adjustment was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website, township cable station, on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: a link to virtual meeting via, by the way of WebEx, call and number for those without an internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made by the way of the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action will be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members would be that we ask you to refrain from asking questions until the applicant's presented all witnesses and exhibits. I'll open the floor to board questions after the applicant is done presenting. In order to reduce potential background noise, we ask that you mute yourself unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Instructions for public input: For those members of the public that are watching, by the way of WebEx, please indicate in the chat section whether you desire to provide input. Please provide your name and address. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you'll have opportunity to provide comment. For those members of the public that are listening, and the call-in number, at the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will unmute the phone lines and ask that you take your turn providing your input. You'll be asked to provide your name and address. Okay, would you call the roll?
Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. We have minutes of the regular meeting, July sixteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
I move second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second.
Yes.
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 No resolutions, no discussion. Moving down to the hearings section, Joseph McGuire, ZBA twenty oh 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 fourteen, C variance, in which the applicant wants to erect a thirty-six-by-twenty-three-foot patio at the rear fourteen Sherman Circle, Somerset Block four oh one lot twenty-four, the R twenty zone. All right, do we have everyone here and ready for this?
Yes, you have the applicant. Let me just find them. In the meantime, I'm going to, Christine, can you bring up the application? Christine's gonna put the application up, and I'll bring in the applicant as an analyst. Okay, so who, is this Joseph McGuire? Are you, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'm here with my wife, Yoli.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. McGuire. Will both of you be giving testimony this evening?
Just, just me.
Okay. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last and provide us with your address.
My name is Joseph A. McGuire, capital M, C, capital G, U, I, P, and I live at fourteen Sherman Circle in Somerset, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. McGuire, you're the owner of the, of the premises, and if you're ready, you can go ahead and tell us what your application is about.
Sure. We would like to remove an existing concrete patio that is approximately, I think, three hundred and, I have to look the exact, three hundred and eighty-four square feet, and put in a permeable paver patio that is greater than that size, about eight hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And I'm asking for permission from the township because we have, we're already at twenty-six percent impervious coverage, and it's going to bring the impervious coverage ratio up to thirty-one percent.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, let me just take the opportunity real quick. Well, first of all, the technical review committee did not have any comments for the board on this application. As far as public participation, and this applies to, obviously, this application and the other two, there's two other ways for, for the public to announce their desire to speak. For those that are watching via WebEx, there is a raise hand button that you can press, and at the appropriate time, that'll alert the board of your desire to speak on a particular application, and at the appropriate time will unmute you. For those that are calling in, you can press star three, and it'll do the same thing. It'll put a little raise hand icon next to your name, and we will call on you at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Again, we'll start. Any, any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have one. This is almost, well, it's over double size. Is there any reason it needs to be that big?
The, the, yes, we would like to just expand upon the existing patio because it's very small, and we are also installing what's called a swim spa, which we already have permit approval for and zoning approval for that, so it's going to, it's going to line up very nicely with our swim spa. The reason why we have so much hardscape, impervious coverage, is because the previous owner of, of the house had put on an addition to this house, and so we have a big house, but not, not a big, not a very big patio at all. That's the reason for the impervious coverage being so high.
One, one question, Mr. Chairman. The application indicates that you're using eco-friendly permeable pavers. Can you speak to those a little bit for the board?
Yes, we, we saw that this was a, a potential issue with the impervious coverage ratios, and we're using something called TECO block that has that, the ability for the water to percolate on the top and then drain off the sides, as I understand it, and it is eco-friendly, and there's, we, we are very flat lands, there's no runoff issues with neighbors and everything, there's no, no hills. So that was the reason for using tho, those pavers. Because they are.
Have you talked to your neighbors?
Every single one of them. We hand-delivered eighteen, actually nineteen, to the two-hundred-foot radius list and spoke with them, and nobody had any issues, and they were very happy. And I will tell you, the process of meeting eighteen neighbors was very, it was very enjoyable for us. We went door-to-door, met people we never met, so.
Okay, thank you.
It was very nice.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a question about the, the techno block relative to the impervious coverage. Does that lessen it, or is it still, does the impervious coverage still, still apply?
Cheryl, I could hear you. I think in the future, you might need to speak up a little bit. So what your question was is the use of the permeable pavers, does that change the calculation of impervious coverage? The answer is it doesn't as far as the ordinance is concerned. The ordinance includes all types of pavers. It actually also includes gravel, so if it was a gravel driveway, the ordinance would include it. The reason why the applicant is raising this is on certain applications, when applicants have asked for impervious surface variances, one of the issues is runoff. So the techno, you know, use of pavers that allow the water to, you know, infiltrate through the blocks and into the ground sometimes is, it may be considered a mitigating measure.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anybody want any other information? We'll open to the public then.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see anybody raising their hand. What I would suggest is let's give a few seconds here for members of the public who wish to comment or ask a question on this application to either use the raise hand function in WebEx. You can also, if you wanted to, indicate in chat if you want to speak on this application in WebEx, or you can do star three if you're calling in. If anybody has any comments on this question, any comments or questions on this application?
Okay, then we'll close to the public. Anybody have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the application.
Okay, poll the board.
Do we want to include a requirement that he uses the, the eco-friendly pavers or is that already included?
Well, I wouldn't say it's necessarily included if, and if that is the applicant's proposal, I don't think there's anything wrong with making that a condition.
Okay. Alan, can we?
Yes, we'll add that as a condition. Thank you.
Who, who seconded?
We have a second to that. Now we can poll the board. Now we can poll the board now.
Four. Four. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda. Mandier, ZBA oh 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 fifteen, applicant is asking for a temporary use of permit in order to conduct the partially outdoor wars for specific dates at two sixty-nine Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, Lot five oh eight point oh two, Lot five point oh three, in the R, Zone R forty. Okay, we'll get set up for that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will bring over the applicants for that. If I may, if I may, Mark, just to the McGuires, so you, you had, you had an approval, a voice approval, that has to be memorialized in a written resolution. That written resolution will be available within the next meeting or two, and then once you get your resolution, then you can commence your project. Or you can, you could go to the building department for permits, I apologize.
Yes, they can, they can, well, they can before with their application out of the variance, it's been granted.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're looking for Mr. Lanfrith.
I am here, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Is Mr. Lahiri available? He's my witness. I just want to confirm that he is here.
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanfrith, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Ananda Mandier. Ananda Mandier since nineteen ninety-nine has been before this board on numerous occasions. And during the numerous hearings that we've had in this matter, the board in their resolutions of approval has always imposed a condition that there shall not be any outdoor activities on the property. As the board is aware, over the last few months, we have been dealing with the pandemic, which has put certain restrictions on all of us, including houses of worship. Ananda Mandier, as if you recall, has their High Holy Days in October and November. This year, they're on October twenty-first through October twenty-fifth, and then on November fourteenth. Because of the pandemic, and there were executive orders issued by the governor's or office, including orders one fifty-two, one fifty-six, one sixty-one, and one seventy-three, the temple is restricted as to the number of people that can be in the temple at any given time. And as the board recalls, there is also a hall on the property, and that is also restricted as far as the number of people that can be in the building. In the past years, the temple has had, on their High Holy Days, significant numbers of people on the property. As a matter of fact, what we are, were required to do is meet with certain township staff to review the event, make sure that there's adequate police to control traffic coming in and out of the site, and to make sure that the event functions properly, and then over, over the last few years, the event has functioned properly. We are in a very different situation this year, and we are here tonight merely to seek permission to put a tent in the parking lot for those five days so that members of the congregation who come to the facility, and it's going to be regulated how they come to the facility, have an opportunity, if they are not able to go directly into the temple or directly into the hall, they will have a place that they can sit and wait to be called so that they can go into the temple. There will be no activities outside, there will be no music, there will be no noise, it's just the, the purpose of this is really to facilitate the flow of people and give them an environment within which to sit, especially if it's raining out. Having said that, as a, and actually, just one other point, if the condition was not imposed by this board, we probably could have been able to go to the township, apply for the permit, we would have had to met with, meet with staff and put up the tent. But we're here this evening only because of the condition that is imposed by the board, and so we're seeking that relief for these five days. Having said that, I would like to have Mr. Lahiri sworn in.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? Sir, I couldn't hear him.
He's gonna unmute. I believe he's muted.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Could you please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your address, please?
My name is Anjan Lahiri, L-A-H-I-R-I, and my address is eight Shady Brook Lane, Cranbury, New Jersey, zero eight five one two.
Mr. Lahiri, you are a member of the congregation at Ananda Mandier?
That is correct. I'm a, I'm in the Board of Trustees, and I've been.
Again, you are a member of the Board of Trustees, correct?
That is correct.
And you were tasked by the Board of Trustees to establish some sort of protocols so that you can have your High Holy Days function in an orderly fashion. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and when we started this process in August, you provided to me the protocols that you put in place, and we submitted those protocols to the township as part of our application, correct?
That is correct.
And as a result of that, the protocols were reviewed by the TRC, and a report was issued on August, there were two reports. There was one issued early August, and then there was a second report, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you briefly indicate to the board what your protocols are for these High Holy Days?
Absolutely. The important thing is that, of course, we have to control the number of people, we have to keep social distancing, and we have to manage the health not only of the community, but also of our own members. Hence, all registrations are online. People have to, we have given slots in each half an hour. People have to pick a slot when they will come, and when they, and, and, and that is, that is for each, each hour. If they don't have a slot online, they cannot enter the temple. What we have said is that when tourists come in, we will ask them if they have registered online. If they have not, they turn back and go away. Then when they park the car, they come to the hall area, and, and there we will check their registration, we will also check temperature. If we find anybody that is not in the, in the, in the temperature range, then the entire carload of people will be asked to go back because we can't, it, it is by family. Once they come in, they will assemble in the hall area. The hall area has an actual capacity of six hundred and eighty-odd people, but obviously twenty-five percent of that, and some seated, we have forty chairs inside for old people and sixty people who can stand for a total of hundred, and we monitor that. And in the hall area, people will assemble, and then in groups of eight, people will be escorted, in a, in a total of about thirty-two, forty people. They will be taken to the temple. In the temple, can accommodate about, about thirty-eight people, and we will ensure that in every half an hour, that, that thirty-eight people go in and thirty-eight people come out. There will be no food. Normally, we distribute elaborate in communal food, which is, there'll be none of that. There will be dry packets of food which will be kept, and people will pick that up and as they, as they go away and go back home. The request for the tent is because people are going to park the car, and they're going to come to the hall in case it is either raining or there is a backup because we can only accommodate as many people, and there is a little bit of a backup, then we have an extra holding place in the tent for people. We don't expect people in the tent to be there for more than five, ten, fifteen minutes, and that is how we plan to do it. We have, we have furiously advertised that it has to be online registered, otherwise you cannot come to the complex, and we request not only a permission, but also the blessings that we are able to conduct this, you know, prayer days in a way which is absolutely safe, harmonious, and effective for the community at large.
Okay, now, the hours of the event, I indicated that the dates were October twenty-first to October twenty-fifth, and what are the hours of the event?
So the prayer started about nine o'clock. I, I, the complex is there, but the temple proper is open from nine to two, and then the temple has to close for some, and temple is closed to public from two to five. Then again, it goes from five to nine. So the temple is open from nine to, nine, uh, uh, nine to two, and then from five to nine every day, October twenty-first to twenty-fifth. On November fourteenth, it's a slightly different thing, and it goes on a little later in the night.
Is it still nine in the clock in the morning, or is it just from, it's just in the evening?
It's in the evening. It's about five o'clock to eleven o'clock is the main thing, and it goes on a little bit slightly.
Okay. And as a result of the reports that were submitted by the TRC, there, there were certain comments that were, were, were given back to us. You reviewed those comments, and all of the comments, which are protocols for safety, they want the tent protected and things of that nature, and if there were going to be lights in the tent, we'd have to get permits for those, we would agree to comply with all of the TRC requirements, is that correct?
Absolutely. They were very, you know, well thought out, and we thank you for the comments, and we will absolutely abide by all of them.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Okay. Anything from the board?
Yes, I, I have a couple questions. When I read the, the TRC reports, there was a discussion about food, and it looked to me like, in the end, that you, you've decided that you're not going to serve any food to the people in the tent or in the hall or anywhere else. Is that correct?
So there will be a crowd, we won't serve food on a, on a buffet style, so there will be a closed and dry packet of food that will be handed over to people that they can take to their car or take home.
Okay, so, and that'll, that seems to require involvement by the Board of Trustees, some other people, is that correct? Am I right with that?
That, that is correct, and licensed people will be there to ensure that the process is handled.
Okay, now, the other, the other thing that I saw that I wanted to clear how that works is, at, at one point, you had a provision that you would take ten percent of the crowd could be unregistered visitors, but when you just testified, that sounds like you've abandoned that strategy.
So based on the feedback from the TRC, the reason is, many of our, of the families, the people are very old and they are not tech savvy, and so we had thought that we will need to keep a provision for them, but post the feedback, what we have done is we have made a list of all these people, and before the event, we're going to call them personally and actually have them registered, and we will register for them. So hence, based on the feedback, we have said absolutely no question, not a single person can walk in without online registration. Thank you for that.
Okay, that's great. So then, then we've avoided that, that issue of there being extra people that you hadn't planned for, and you, you're ready to comply with whatever's necessary for the food issue?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yep.
I just have one question. When the people are in the tent or outside, is there any, any extra noise involved, like any music playing or?
No, there will be no music, there will be no lighting, which we will take the necessary approvals for. It is just a holding waiting area, there is no ceremony, I mean, there's just normal people talking, that's it.
No activity other than just conversation?
No, no.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. When the, when the, the tent, are they wearing masks?
That's another good point. Inside the entire complex, people will be required, and they're wearing the reservation slot, we have said that they have to wear a mask at all times, in the complex, inside or outside.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any, any others?
Yes. I have a question. How social distancing be carried out within the tent?
So in the tent is a twenty-by-forty-foot tent, so what we have done is, we want to keep three banks of four chairs each, so that is about six trees, about thirty-six feet across, and then we'll have three rows across the twenty feet. If you have three rows across twenty feet, that is six trees by eighteen, so we will cover that. So each family can sit on a group of four chairs, so we'll have the ability to accommodate three by three, nine, you know, families, nine families there. That's how we will do social distancing.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I have a couple. Now, these, if we approve this, that's going to be ongoing. It's not going to be just for this year, it's going to be for every year, correct?
No, Mr. Rich, that's, that's not it, that is not correct. We're asking for a temporary permit just for this year, for the four days in October and the one day in November. In analyzing this, I could have perhaps asked for a. In analyzing this, I could have perhaps asked for a relief of condition, but that may have caused some confusion, which may have indicated to the board that I was asking for permanent relief to put a tent outside all the time or every year. That's not what we're doing. We're just asking for permission this year, and actually, under your ordinance, a temporary use permit is only good for six months maximum. So, it would be for these five days, and your resolution of approval would be only for these five days. Hopefully, by next year, the pandemic will be under control, so we don't have to deal with this. But in the event that, you know, the situation is different or the same next year, we'd have to go through this process again.
Okay, very good. That was a very good answer. Now, I have a little bit of a problem with the eleven o'clock on November fourteenth. You're surrounded by houses, and eleven o'clock is kind of late at night.
That was part of the resolution of approval for the High Holy Days, that we were entitled to have those hours because it tied into lunar calendar. We're not asking for approval of the hours because they were previously approved by this board, and the High Holy Days have special exemptions for those hours.
Another very good answer. Okay, Mark, this one is for you. Have there been any violations, anything happening out there that we need to know about?
Well, I think we have in the past. I think largely, they've cleaned things up on the site as opposed to the, you know, previous years. That's a general statement, obviously, but compared to the past, they've been better.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
And I just want to clarify, it's actually, days is actually six days, right? Five in October and one in November.
That is correct.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Get that to me loud, Mr. Chairman.
I have my volume all the way up. Can you hear me now?
It is six days, yes, like it's five days in October and one.
Okay.
Mr. Lanford?
Any others?
Yeah, Mr. Lanford, I think you've addressed most of them, but can you just go through, your initial supplemental, obviously, the TRC had a lot of comments, and your revised supplemental, basically, you addressed most of them, but there were one, two, three, four, five remaining questions. Can you just go through them point by point and clarify to the board? The last page.
Unfortunately, you're talking about the temporary food license. I think we discussed that. Permit required for the canopy, we've discussed that, that we will do that. Vehicle inspection, that was raised by Mr. House on an email to me. Again, we will comply with that. The question was where, when the people come in, if they're going to be checked if facility by the house, and if they are not registered, there's ample room for them to turn around and leave, because there's some handicapped parking spaces in that areas. So, there's ample room to turn around and they can leave at that point. So, they're not, we're not having them come all the way into the site and then making them leave, but yet, they're coming into the site sufficiently far enough so that we're not going to back up any traffic on Cedar Grove Lane. But again, I think we're going to have to apply for all this stuff, and I'm sure I'm going to have discussions with Mr. House, and if he's not happy with that solution, I'm sure we can work that out. Can't read, unfortunately. I think the last question was controlling the people on site, and again, I think Mr. Lahiri answered that. And just for the record, there are three hundred and seventeen parking spaces on the property. Tent will take up a few of those, but there's more than ample parking to handle the rest of the cars that are coming onto the site with our parking.
I would think that that is especially true with this situation, since the whole affair seems to be functioning in ways at a time, so that there's people coming constantly, but people leaving constantly. So, hopefully, if you keep a good traffic flow, shouldn't be any issue with the numbers of people or any backups. Any other items?
Mr. Chairman, just, I just want again, since we're heading towards the public comment period, I just want to remind the public again that they can raise their hand. If they can't find that, they can indicate in the chat section, or if they're calling in, they can do star three. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more witnesses, correct?
There are no more witnesses.
Okay, then we'll open to the public.
Okay, so we do have one. Let me just find her. Okay, so Carol, I'll bring you in. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. So, when you come on, if you get to announce, pronounce your name, your last name, spell your last name, and provide your address as I bring you in a second here.
Okay, great. Hi, good evening. You know, I got this letter from the attorney, and I felt compelled to respond. My name is Carol. You know, why don't I just go ahead and read the letter that I sent to Christine Woodbury, and about my concerns about this event that's coming up. I'm just going to go ahead and read the email that I sent her exactly the way I wrote it.
Ma'am, if I could, just interrupt you one second. This is the attorney speaking. Before you do that, I'm going to swear you in. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay. I'll just read the letter. Good afternoon, Ms. Christine Woodbury. My name is Mrs. Carol Lefree. My husband and I are responding to the letter we received from the township regarding the construction of a tent in the parking lot of the Adendum Endear Temple. Since there is no guarantee, of course, I'm here now, so this is a, but I'll read what I have. Since there's no guarantee that we will be able to participate in the virtual meeting scheduled for tomorrow at seven-thirty P.M., we take this opportunity in this email to voice our concerns of the impending event. We have been living at the address below for more than sixteen years. Our property is adjacent to the parking lot on which the proposed temporary tent will be constructed. For us, it means that for five days in October and one day in November, incidentally, that's my daughter's birthday too, our family and other residents of Valleywood Drive will have to endure the noise, and I capitalize "noise," and bright lights, and I capitalize "bright lights," and I'll tell you why, of this event spilling over into our homes. As the zoning board and Adendum Endear Temple know, a lot of families live here. The temple was constructed in the midst of a residential community, but it seems that the temple has chosen to ignore this basic fact. Worshippers from the temple get to go home after their celebrations or over to their quiet communities, while our families' lives and daily routine are interrupted during these activities. Since its construction, the temple has not always adhered to township's ordinances, and as a result, we have had to call the municipality on a few occasions to report excessive noise and lighting that extended into the night. For example, we have been subjected to noise from the temple activities beginning as early as four A.M. and as late as one A.M., both weekdays and weekends, including, but not limited to, garbage trucks, construction vehicles, workers, and temple members blasting music, cutting across lawns to gain access to the temple, or, most recently, racing cars in the temple parking lot. I love Franklin Township and its diversity of people and cultures. At the same time, having the temple should not take away our rights as residents to the peace and quiet we deserve in this wonderful community. Adendum Endear must respect its neighbors by establishing and enforcing rules of operation and engagement of occupants of its property. We hope that the township will use its oversight to address the issues we raise in this email. Thank you for your kind consideration. Now, that was the email that I sent. Now, again, the noise is a concern. I've heard Mr., let me see what your name is, Lahiri, talk about there's just a five, ten, fifteen-minute holding area for its congregants. You know, I heard you talk about the process of going into the temple, but I didn't really hear you speak much about the community and its impact on us. I'm also concerned about this becoming a recurring thing. I hear your attorney say, no, it's not going to be, but I was one of the, myself and a few other members of the community, they have since left. And by the way, let me just be honest with you. Some of the people that moved out of this community left precisely because of temple and the noise and so forth. So, people have actually moved out because of that. But when I first, when I first heard about the construction of the temple, I came to the municipality and I spoke. I had raised some of these concerns, and I was assured that we would not have any problems, okay? That has not always been the case. I have had to call the township, like I said in my email, a few times because of violation at the temple. I'm also concerned about the hours. In October, five days, you know, it's really a twelve-hour day, okay? I know you have a window of from two to five where supposedly there is no activity, but I am sure there'll be people there. So, it's really for five days, twelve hours from nine to nine is really what it is. And then, in October and in November, you have your function until eleven P.M. I mean, does anybody think about the people who live here? So, those are my concerns. And like I said, I have lived here for over sixteen years.
May I just go into some of those comments, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please do.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, probably you and I know better than anyone that there has been a history with respect to this temple. We started back in nineteen ninety-nine, and there were some problems with respect to events and functions. As a result of those problems, many of the protocols have been changed, and I would dare say that the problems that arise from that temple are few and far between. One of the comments about racing on the property, and this has been brought to my attention before, and it's obviously not any members of the temple that drive on the property to drag race or to race. And one of the things that the board did approve at our last hearing is the ability to put up a gate, which we're in the process of constructing, basically to keep people who don't belong on the property off the property, so things like that do not happen. That was an issue that was a concern some years ago. The temple was proactive, and...
Yeah, this happened recently. The drag race and the car racing happened recently.
Yeah, I'm not denying it, but I don't, I'm saying it's not, I don't think it's members of the temple that are doing it. It's people that come onto the property, and that's why we're building a gate which will lock the parking lot, so people can't do that. As far as the hours, as I've indicated earlier, this is a religious organization. They have the right, based on their previous approvals, to have these events during the hours that we set forth in our proposal.
So, it doesn't matter who lives here, right? It doesn't matter.
Let me stop this for a second. We need to have one person speaking at a time. We all listen to your concerns. Now, Mr. Lanford is going to address them from his perspective. You will be given another opportunity to comment as well. We cannot have people speaking over each other, especially in this format. Thank you.
Can I proceed?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Again, as I indicated, we're not here this evening to ask for permission to have the event during those hours. That issue was dealt with in the previous approvals. Those are High Holy Days, and they are in the resolutions of approval dating back from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and seventeen, which was the last resolution of approval. Regarding her concern about noise, I think Mr. Lahiri clearly indicated that there were going to be very few people in the tent, and they were going to at best be talking to each other. We cited and located the tent behind the temple as far away as possible from the residences. We didn't put the tent anywhere near the residences on Valleywood. We moved it to the southerly side of the property, so again, it would have as little intrusion as possible. At this juncture, there may be one additional light that is going to be placed in the tent for safety reasons, and there is no additional illumination other than the illumination from the lights in the parking lot, which we are entitled to have on when we have our events. So, again, I think, well, you know, I understand the concern of the residents. I think we've taken great pains to make sure that when we put this tent up, it doesn't have an impact on the adjoining neighbors. Again, the bottom line is we have the right to have this event. It's a religious event that was approved in the previous resolutions. And again, your ordinance, and she indicates that, you know, this temple is in a residential zone. Unfortunately, your ordinance only allows houses of worship in residential zones, so that's where they have to be located. And again, we went through all the procedures and protocols to have the temple properly approved at that site. That's all I have to say at this time.
Any further comment? Any more public comment?
Again, can I speak? I want the attorney and Mr. Lahiri to understand that the parking lot, my property, is right up against that parking lot, you know, right up against that parking lot. And in the past, I have had, not most recently, but we've had to complain about the lights coming into, because in the back of my house are glass windows, and the light would shine right into my family room. So, it is a big concern for me.
Again, the resolution of approval allows us to have the lights on in the evenings during the High Holy Days. Also, during the previous hearings, when we did the parking lot and we did the lighting, the lighting is such that all of the lights don't go on the parking lot when we need the light, but only those that are necessary depending on the event. And you indicated in the past, these were concerns. I think, and I'm not going to disagree with you, in the past, there were some problems with them leaving lights on longer than they should have or having lights on that weren't necessary. But I think, and to be fair, that they've addressed those problems, and I think they've operated within the confines of the resolution of approval over the last couple of years, and that situation has been alleviated.
I just simply want to guarantee that my life will not be interrupted because of this event.
Well, all I can tell you is that we have the right to have those lights on on those nights, and quite frankly, I think that what we're doing here is probably less of an interruption in your life than when, under normal circumstances, when we have this event, because we have larger numbers of people on the property coming in, which, again, they have the right to do, but... which again, they have the right to do, but it is a very busy time for these high holy days. But with this event and with the controls we have in place, what is going to take place there this year is going to be a lot less than has taken place there over the last couple of years.
Okay, anything else from the public?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, we do have a few other people with their hands raised. I'm going to select them one at a time. I just want to remind the public that at this point, we're asking you to raise your hand if you wish to speak on this application. If you're wishing to speak on the next application, we'd ask you to, there is a way to lower your hand and we would ask you to put your hand back up when that other application is on. So with that said, I'm going to bring up Robert Kishinsky. Mister, Mister Kishinsky, you're unmuted? You wish to speak? Mister Kishinsky, you're unmuted? Now, why don't we go back to him? I'm going to go to one of the callers. Okay, this is a two oh one number. Okay, so one of the people who called in with a two oh one area code wished to speak. You're unmuted?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead. If you could identify your name, spell your last name and your address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Dhvani, last name is Davee, D A V E. My address is forty-two Valleywood Drive. And I'm in the adjacent to the Mandir.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you? I'm actually going to swear him in. I'm kind of going into not only questions, but also some testimony. So, sir, could you please raise your right hand wherever you are? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, can you just state your name and spell your name before I say your address one more time?
Sure, first name is D H V A N I, last name is D A V E. And my address is forty-two Valleywood Drive.
Okay, thank you, sir. You can go ahead.
Yeah, so I believe lady's name was Karen. I have similar concerns, but I am directly not adjacent. And I just want to voice this concern that I have in that, in fact, that the only thing I want to say is, you know, if the privacy can be respected and, you know, this doesn't become the norm, right? That's the only thing I would like to request for. And that's it. I'll make it short, but that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mister Chairman, we have another caller. This person has a caller that raised their hand with, starts with a seven three two area code. And if I could ask the previous caller to press star three to lower his hand? Okay, so caller with the seven three two area code, speak up, please.
Yes. Sir, my name is Raj.
Just before you begin, can you raise, please raise your right hand? If he could say his last name, spell his last name first as well? I will. Could, do you swear or affirm the? Sir, hold on one second. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, could you please state your name and spell your last?
My first name is Raj, R A J, and last name Sadhu, S A D H U.
And can you give us your address, please?
Eighteen Valleywood Drive, Somerset.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Eighteen, yes. I'm right adjacent to the, to the parking lot. And we have a lot of issues because then during, especially during the Sara and Diwali, which is October and November, people park their cars right in front of our houses and they trespass through our properties and go into the temple because the GPS stops in front of my house. And this has been so painful to all the Valleywood residents, especially me, my neighbor, and a couple of others. People, there is no parking in the temple. And now on top of it, they're building a tent, so there is no more space. And they, like as usually, like they did last year, they parked here on Valleywood and they trespass through our properties. Last year, there are a couple of people waiting in front of my lane, taking permission. They're ringing the bell saying that, hey, can I go back? I see the temple, I just want to, I don't want to go to the main road and walk all the way. And some people, they don't even hesitate to just go across the property. And this, I mean, I have the same, I believe in the same religion, everything. It's not a complaint because of a religion factor. It's a nuisance and it's an issue with people trespassing the, somebody's private properties. And I don't know what else I can tell. And this party, lightning, songs, music, those are the standard comments like everybody else. But we also have this additional issues during the festival seasons. Obviously, we also follow the same festivals, but still, these people tend to, they last for much longer than anybody else.
Okay. Any others?
So Mister Chairman, we do have one question. I, unfortunately, Mister Kishinsky says he has mic issues. And his question is, I hear his rights, what are their responsibilities? So it does, I think it's a form of a question, so I, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to convey that. He's not providing any testimony. So I don't know if, that's the question. I hear his rights, what are their responsibilities? I think I can answer that in part. I mean, part of their responsibilities, the applicant's responsibilities, is to abide by the laws of the township and the state and whatever conditions the board happens to impose. So that's the applicant's responsibilities. I don't know if Mister Lanford, if you wish to speak to that. I know it's a very general question.
Yeah. And I think to some degree, you know, you're correct. We do have to comply with the conditions of approval. As noted in the past, we have met with township staff when we have these annual events to make sure we have adequate parking, adequate police to control the crowds. Let me see, this is not going to be the case this year. This is going to be a very limited crowd. And I think some of these comments and concerns that the neighbors have raised are some things that we can take into account in, going forward in the future. First of all, obviously, no one should be walking across anybody else's property without permission. If, in fact, that is happening, obviously, they have the right to call the police because that's trespassing. With respect to the issue of lights, this township has reviewed the site plan. All of the lights are back shielded. When this project was approved, all of the lighting faces down into the parking lot and there is no light spillage onto adjoining properties. As a matter of fact, Mister Haley, I think you may have been present at the property at the very end before the C L was issued, when they were testing the lights to make sure that the shields were there and there was no spillage of the, of light on the adjoining properties, which is an ordinance requirement. And we have complied with that. As far as people parking on Valleywood, Valleywood, it is a public road. They have a right, if they want to park there, to park there. There's nothing in the, our resolution of approval or in your ordinances that prohibits parking on that street. It doesn't allow people to walk across the parking lot, but they are public streets. They have the right to be, people have the right to drive on them and people have the right to park on them. But if, if there is a problem, I think, you know, unfortunately, sometimes these problems are never communicated to us until we make a notice for a hearing and then they're communicated publicly. And I would suggest to all of these people, if they do have a problem or concern, to reach out to the representatives of the temple so that we can address these problems so they don't have them in the future.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, what I would suggest is, since Mister Lanford did provide some additional commentary, maybe you have give the public one last chance to comment or respond to what he just said. So.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. I'll just say, Paul, do you have anything you wish to say to the board?
Yes, you know, I, I'm shocked to hear this attorney's talking about they have a right to park on the streets. They do, but you know what? If, if the residents don't have a place to park or our guests or family members come over and they have to compete with worshippers from the temple, that's a problem. You know, I, I find this attorney to be a bit flippant, quite honestly, and it's really annoying me. For you to say that the lighting was not an issue, when I had to call, personally had to call the township on a few occasions because the light was literally in my, flooding my family room. And it was after that point that they had to, they, they had, they began to discuss the issue. To say that noise is not an issue when they're beating the drums out, walking around in the parking lot early in the morning and having these activities early in the morning, waking me up on a Sunday morning at seven o'clock or banging of trucks and things at four A M. in the morning, you know? Where do you live? You know, Mister Lahiri, you live in Cranberry, right?
That's correct.
You know, I don't think you would tolerate that where you are. Okay? And I happen to know Cranberry, very quiet, peaceful area, okay? It's not okay. It's not okay. I pay a lot of taxes here. A lot of people have left because of the amendment in the temple. Precisely because of the complaints that you're hearing from me and my other neighbors, okay? Our homes happen to be, my house happens to be squarely up against that parking lot. And so is the residence at number eighteen, but they also have the temple to deal with. And, and, and please, please, it has nothing to do with, you know, because I know sometimes people like to make it into a racial issue or something. Has nothing to do with that, okay? It simply has to do with us being able to, 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 to live in our homes and not have these impositions. And you really need to understand that. And so for this attorney to say that people, they have a right to park wherever they want, you know? They have a right to park on our street and cut across our lawns to go over to the temple. They have a right to just take up all the parking space on our, on twenty-two, on, on Valleywood Drive. No, that's unacceptable. So I think I've made my point and I'm so glad that, I wish more of my neighbors had, had joined us. But I know we are not the only ones that have concerns about this.
If I could just save Mister Lanford to having to respond to that last comment. And to be fair, I understand you're upset about this application and it affects you, but he did not say they had the right to walk over people's property.
No, I, no.
Just to be clear.
He said they have the right to park wherever they want, that it's a public road.
That, that is a true statement. He did say that.
And then what do you think they do? They cross right over because they're not going to walk all the way around onto Cedar Grove Lane. They cut right across our lawn.
I'm missing something here because I just have a hard time understanding, under normal circumstances, what advantage is a member of that temple getting by parking over there as opposed to parking in the parking lot? The parking lot does have room. We are aware as a board in the past that there have been problems associated with this use. However, every time there's been another application, we've added a few more conditions to try and tighten things up a little bit. I would have to see the lighting. You know, we approve a lot of applications with a lot of very strict requirements that the light does not spill over off the property. It doesn't mean that the lights go on in the parking lot and you won't see a light on because that, that's not necessarily going to happen. There were problems with this facility in the past where the lights were left on. We impose standards or conditions where, where they would be turned off in, at certain times and some will be responsible for taking care of that. If, if the township, the applicant isn't made aware of these things not being done the way they're supposed to, then it's a little hard to come here and do something about it. I don't know what to say. We try and address the concerns. I think that to a large degree, a lot of things have been cleaned up. This particular application deals with these four or five days and then it expires. It doesn't apply to any other affair. So in a sense, maybe this is a chance for everybody to take a good look and see what's, you know, how we can exist, coexist together. Because the use is there, it's permitted, it has a right to be there. And you have your rights as a neighbor and a resident to, to your, your lifestyle. But somewhere there has to be an in-between. And we can't go on, quite frankly, all night long, going back and forth over this.
I'd just like to make a comment. I mean, to me, the observation is, is more about trust. If, if, if the residents can trust that the two can coexist, the, the worship, the house of worship and the residents. And if they agree when applications are approved, that they will follow requirements of the approval and then that is done. I think it sounds, what I'm hearing is more about trust. If you say you're going to do something and if there's a problem and you fix it, then the citizens, the residents in the neighborhood trust that you're, you have their best interests. To me, that's what it sounds like. I don't doubt that House of Worship is, is doing their best. If that's communicated and it appears or it feels like those issues aren't being addressed, when another application comes to the board, those same residents are going to say, here we go. That's what I'm hearing.
What's up? I have a comment. Maybe for these, these few days, the, the, the church or to have, have either a security guard or volunteer from the board trustees on, on that road where people are parking to, to make sure that, that people can cross onto the private lawns. I, I mean, that's been done before. I, I think it's the church's responsibility to protect the private, the private owners from, from people trespassing across their property if they want to park over there.
Any other comments? Any other, are we still looking for any more public comment?
Let me just, let me just, to a gentleman who spoke before, I'm going to unmute you. Just speak up, please, if you wish to add any comments. I'm going to unmute you right now. Just let us know, you're both unmuted. Just let us know if you have any other comments or questions.
Yes, this is once again Raj, eighteen Valleywood Drive.
Go ahead, please.
The, the reason why we brought up the comment is not that, okay, this shouldn't coexist or anything. We are bringing up these complaints so that they take care of it, so that it doesn't happen. So you can plan it properly. My biggest concern is previously the parking lot itself was not sufficient. Now you are adding a tent while people are waiting. waiting, they can cross onto our side, the kids can play. Then that happened in the past. They will come onto our side of the property and like, there is a basketball hoop right behind my house in the parking lot, in the temple parking lot. Kids play there. And sometimes they even cross onto our, into my personal property. That happened in the past. And during the festival times, people are crossing to the inside to the temple. So by having a tent in the waiting area, these things can happen. So they, they can plan properly and then make things happen, make it easy for everybody. That is the whole idea. Maybe some, when you are taking an appointment, give a specific time, like this 15 minute, 3:15 to 3:30 is your appointment time. Make sure they won't wait there and then the parking is sufficient, the rest of the area. That's some of the thoughts.
Okay, any other comments out there?
Kids, is there a caller of any other comments? Okay, I'm not hearing any, Mr. Chairman.
If not, then we will now close to the public. And is there anything Mr. Lanford wishes to say?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman. Based on the information that we have provided to the township concerning this event that was reviewed by the TRC, based on the testimony of Mr. Lahiri concerning the protocols, the way the work this year is that they are only going to be, and this isn't part of our submission, only 50 people for an hour. And then, so even if there is an overlap and another 50 people come and they all come in one car, the most you're going to have is 100 cars in a 314 car parking lot. So their concerns, while they, they have a problem, I'm not denying that there, there may be problems. Those problems need to be worked out. And I wish that the members of the neighborhood would reach out to the temple, let us know that there's a problem so that we can deal with it. But as far as this year is concerned, there is not going to be a problem because we are restricting who comes on the property and when they come on the property. So there's not going to be any problems this year. If, you know, with respect to these other complaints, we will duly note them. And if either any of the three people that spoke that live on Valleywood want to meet with representatives of the temple, please reach out to me and I'll set that up so that we can come up with ideas that the people can work with each other. So we're not disrupting the quality of their lives and that we can hold our events and not have to worry about our neighbors being disturbed and disrupted. But as far as tonight, the application is strictly for that tent. I think we've given a valid reason for the temporary use permit, given the circumstances we're in during this pandemic. And hopefully by next year, a lot of these bugs will be dealt with. I also want to point that every year when we have this, this event, we do meet with the township, we advise them of the event, we advise them of the dates of the event, we have police that are at the site to manage and make sure everything does flow properly. And all of this is at our sole cost and expense. And again, if some of these people have concerns and don't want to meet with us, please share their concerns with the township. And then when we meet with them before our event next year, we know what these concerns are and we'll be able to deal with them. But again, for, for this evening's presentation, all we're asking for is the ability to put the tent up so that we can have some orderly flow and a place for people to segregate before they go into the building. I thank you for your time this evening.
Your, your summary just raised unfortunately a quick question. Is, you, as you mentioned, and we know, these, these special holidays have already been approved. The churches and this institution is entitled to celebrate them in an appropriate manner, correct?
That is correct.
Which they could still do with or without this tent this year.
That is correct.
The, the, if this is approved, it seems to me that the, the tent is, is an attempt on the part of the institution to provide a little bit more orderly affair and still comply with the executive orders from the government, governor concerning the pandemic. It's a little more structure and a little more order than it would be normally. And just have the parking lot open and the facilities open and anybody come that wants to come. Isn't that the way it would be normally?
Normally, we would have the event basically the same days, depending on the lunar calendar, but four days in October and then one day in November. And the facility is open all day and people can come and go as they please. Again, this year it is very controlled with a limited number of people that will be allowed on the site at any given time.
Which should also be a significant improvement in that sense, even though it's, it's addressing different concerns. Any more discussion or motion?
I move that we grant the amendment here, a temporary use permit to allow them to erect a tent in their parking lot following the protocol that has been developed with the Franklin Township TRC.
And we need a second. I'll second it.
No. Yes.
You know, we could, we could fix that whole problem with a fence. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Go ahead, Joe. I muted you. Joe, you're unmuted.
Yes.
It's a yes with admonishment to the attorney that maybe it is time to try and set up some communicate, direct communications between the parties involved and, and put this to sleep once and for all, hopefully.
I, I think Mr. Lahiri heard the comments. Hopefully they can reach out to either him. They need to get his contact information. They can reach out to my office. They have my address from the legal notice. I'd be happy to put them in touch with each other so we can get some discussion going.
Thank you. Okay.
I would like to, to second Michael Rich's comment, Michael, Alan Rich's comment, that maybe a fence between those properties in the parking lot is a solution to a lot of what's going on here. But that's not sleeping for us tonight.
Thanks for your input on that. Okay. Next application.
Mr. Chairman, before we start it, since I have limited workspace, I'm not in my normal situation. Can we take five minutes so I can get the file set up?
Yeah, but not five minutes like last night.
I was back in five minutes. It was your chairman last night who waited, I think it was nine minutes.
Okay. We'll recess for five minutes. Okay, does that look like you're ready?
I'm ready.
Are you, are you out there, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I would say Mr. Accapella.
Are, are you ready, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, the next application, Bada Bot One Vignon Institute, ZBA 1900040, D3 Conditional Use Variance, C Variance, and Site Plan, in which the applicant's asking to construct a 21,083 square foot place of worship with parking lot and a five-foot monument sign at 60 South Middle Bush Road, Somerset Lot 37.02, Lot 46.03, in Zone A. Before we actually formally start, I think we do, we are looking to do some things a little differently. For the rest of the board, I know we say in the beginning, we're going to allow all the witnesses to be presented without asking questions, and then go into the question and answer session, and then bring the public in all the way to the end. In this hearing, we're going back to our more traditional form where we hear a witness, question a witness, open it to the public, and move on. In this case, it's my understanding, we have a couple of attorneys or potential objectors who will also then be given an opportunity before the public speak, questions witness, to question, cross, cross, examine the witnesses. I think we have a couple of objector comments that we need to deal with almost before we start. Is that, yes? Yes. Yeah, we can wait. We have no choice. I think he has some, he'll have some comments to make on this also. So we'll be, we'll be starting officially momentarily. Okay, we've basically just introduced the application. Okay. Electronics are great when they work. Oh, good, good to see you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can hear you, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Okay, we, we basically introduced the application.
I cannot hear you.
How about now?
Still obviously trying to get our attorney back on. Ma'am.
I can also see you.
I'm calling, can you hear me?
I can hear.
No, I'm, I'm still loading. Hey, why don't you try calling in, then I can just unmute you. Can you hear me? Can you hear you, can you hear me? Bye-bye. I can hear you on my phone.
Okay, uh, you still out there, Mr. Lafferty?
I am still here.
Okay. Uh, Dan, you said we would have to deal with a couple of, uh, objector issues.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna just sign off on this. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I hear you now, yes.
I can't. I, I can't hear you, I can't hear anybody.
I have you loud and clear.
Hey Christine. I can hear you, yeah.
You can hear, okay.
Oh, okay. And I tried to call in too, but, uh, nothing was coming through. I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear Dan loud and clear.
I can't hear him. Can I try to, should I try to, to call a number again? All right. Out of, of, um, of, uh, my back's over here, 'cause like, I'm not getting anything right now, I don't know why.
Yes. I heard everything.
Hello?
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 Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay, we, I hear you, very good.
Okay, good.
Now, we were gonna start to deal-
I apologize.
That's, that's, it happens. We were gonna start to deal with the objections.
Okay, hang on one second. Okay, um, so I, I, I don't, I would, I'll just start over then. So, uh, we have two, um, counsel for the neighboring properties. Um, the, uh, counsel for, uh, one of the neighbors, um, submitted a correspondence today, dated September the 17th. Uh, Mr. Lafferty, did you have the ability to see that correspondence?
Yes, I was provided a copy.
Okay, um, 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 Mr. Lafferty, I'll defer to you as to, do you want to give your opening statement, and then proceed with the procedural information? Or do you wanna deal with the informa- procedural stuff first?
I, I, I think we probably need to deal with the jurisdictional issue that was raised by counsel first.
Okay. Um, Mark, if you can make the, um, I believe there are two attorneys representing the neighboring properties, if you can make them, uh, unmute them, or make them, uh, part of, part of the panelists. Um, I'll let, uh, counsel, his name is, uh, Mr. Gregory Asadorian. He's the one who wrote the correspondence. And I'll let him, uh, essentially summarize his letter. And, uh, Mr. Lafferty, you can respond.
Okay, so why don't I make, um, Mr. Asadorian and, uh, I think we have Ms., um, uh, Bailey, uh, I'm gonna make both of them panelists, so they can, uh, participate, I'll do that right now.
Great, great.
So, with that both on, uh, Dan, do you, is, uh, and what, uh, one go first versus the other? Any suggestion on that?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Asadorian did write the letter, uh, so, Mr. Asadorian, um, launch into your appearance and, um, give us, uh, the benefit of summarizing your correspondence.
Absolutely, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, yes, yes.
Good evening, Gregory Asadorian, from the Law Firm of Price, Ms. Cholman, D'Armenio, on behalf of the interested parties, John Warwick and Mary Ellen Warwick. Uh, in essence, I believe the Board lacks jurisdiction to hear the application at this time. The reason for the basis is set forth in my letter, which I would like to address. If we look at the variance application that was filed on behalf of the applicant, the variance application solely seeks a D1 variance and no other variances. However, the notice that was published and sent to the property owners asks for a D3, not a D1. Similarly, the site plan application indicates that the proposed temple is going to be 25,344 square feet. However, the notice identifies the proposed structure as 21,083 square feet. Similarly, the notice indicates that the existing dwelling, residential dwelling, is going to remain. However, the applicant's environmental assessment report states that the resident, the existing residential structure is going to be demolished. Based upon the discrepancies in the application and the notice, I believe that the nature of the application is unclear and confusing. It pursuant to the MOUL, the nature of the application must be set forth so that a member of the public can understand what is to be heard by the Board, and then can make a decision as to whether they choose to be heard or not. Here, we have conflicting information with respect to whether the application's a D1 or D3. We have conflicting information with respect to the size of the proposed structure. We have conflicting information with respect to whether the existing structure is going to remain or to be demolished. Therefore, it's unclear to the public as to what the nature of the application is. Similarly, there is a, uh, big confusion as to whether or not the existing structure becomes a accessory structure, assuming it does not get demolished. If the application is approved, the proposed house of worship will become the principal structure on the property. This would then make the existing residential structure a accessory structure. And pursuant to the application, in part, it states that the residential structure will remain and will be used by the clergy for residential purposes. If this is true, a D1 variance application is needed for the existing accessory structure, because ordinance, the municipal ordinance states at Section 112-16D that no accessory shall be used for residential purposes in any zone. As a result, if this, if the existing structure remains, and it's being used as an accessory for residential purposes, then triggers a D1 variance, which was neither noticed for nor submitted in either the variance application or the site plan. Finally, if the Board, uh, checklist requires that an LOI be submitted, we further, um, argue that the application is deficient, because though an LOI has been provided, that LOI has expired. There is no current or valid, uh, LOI at this time. As a result, if an LOI is part of the checklist submission package, and no waiver was requested, then the application is deficient on those grounds as well.
Okay, Mr. Asadorian, is that all you have?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty, you have any response?
Uh, I, I sure do, thank you, counsel. Um, let me start with the fact that the application that was submitted in this application does reference a conditional use variance. Houses of worship are a permitted conditional use in the A-zone. If an application or an applicant does not meet all of the conditions of a conditional use variance, or conditional use, then it is a- or conditional use, then it is a D3 variance. Our legal notice requests a D3 variance. Uh, Mr. Healy, in reviewing the application as the zoning officer and also as the planner, issued in a report which indicates it's a D3 variance. Now, the council stated what the statute says regarding what a notice must provide. And I would refer the board to the Pearlmark case, Pearlmark versus Lacey Township Planning Board, 295 NJ SUPER 234. It's a 1996 active case. And it indicates that the court stressed that the information that would inform the public of the nature of the application in a common sense manner such that an ordinary layperson could intelligently determine whether to object or to seek further information. That's what a notice must contain. I hate to do this to the board. I am going to read into the record the notice that I provided, which is rather lengthy. And it indicates, please take notice that the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 17th, 2020, at 7:30 PM has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building, 475 to Mount Lane, Somerset, New Jersey, to a virtual meeting format. The meeting will now be conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public attendance of public meetings of the Franklin Township Board of Adjustment would pose a risk to the health and safety and welfare of the public. The subject of the hearing will be Dada Bagwan Vignan Institute, docket number ZBA 1900040, application for D3 conditional use variance, C variance, and site plans to permit the construction of a 21,083 square foot place of worship, including a 6864 square foot worship area as well as ancillary areas such as warming kitchens, restroom, storage, 2,533 square foot basement, et cetera. 157 parking spaces provided and two parking areas. Access to South Middle Bush Road is proposed via a proposed driveway located in roughly the same area of the existing residential driveway on the site. Associated site modifications include utility extensions, grading and drainage modifications, and site lighting, and perimeter site landscaping and fencing. A five-foot-tall monument sign is proposed near the site entrance on South Middle Bush Road. The existing two-and-a-half-story dwelling is proposed to remain. The development would be serviced by onsite well and septic and an underground water storage tank proposed for fire, uh, firefighting purposes. Variances will be required from the township of Franklin as follows. D3 conditional use variance, off-street parking, 117-37.D1, 457 parking spaces required, 157 parking spaces proposed. Parking location, 112-37.E. The majority of the parking spaces shall be located to the rear of the main structure with no more than 10% of the total parking space is located at the front entrance for his impact accessibility, weddings and funeral services. Parking is located in front of the building. Building setback side, 112-37.G, 75 feet required, 67.9 feet proposed. Building setback rear, 112-37.G, 200 feet required, 50 feet proposed. Buffer, 112-37.K1N2, requires a 15-foot buffer consisting of double-staggered rows of evergreen trees planted at a maximum of 10 feet on center with minimum planting heights of 6 to 8 feet or approved equivalent. A mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs and six-foot-high solid board-on-board fence or 25-feet-wide heavily landscaped buffer area with triple-staggered rows of evergreen trees planted at a maximum of 10 feet on center with a minimum planting height of 6 to 8 feet or approved equivalent, and a mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs. Buffer requirement not fully satisfied in certain areas along the property lines. Lighting, 112-37.K3, maximum mounting height of 15 feet, 17.5 feet is being proposed. C variance, freestanding sign area, 25 square feet permitted, 65, 67.5 square feet proposed. Applicant seeks any other waivers or variances that the Board of Adjustment may find necessary at that time, although none other than those, uh, other than those above are contemplated at the present time. The plan is for the site known as Lot 3, 7.02, Lot 4, 6.03, located at 630 South Middle Bush Road, Township of Franklin, New Jersey, which is located in the A-zone. And then it goes on and has all the information for the public to access the website, and I'm not gonna bore the board with reading all of that. I want to now refer you back to what case law says. That a notice must contain information that would inform the public of the nature of the application in a common sense manner such that an ordinary layperson could intelligently determine whether to object or seek further information. The notice that we provided, I think, was more than clear and comprehensive so that anybody receiving that notice, uh, would know what we are proposing. Uh, the issue of the building, uh, the notice requirement doesn't necessarily require that the notice be 100% correct, but although what we've noticed was that the building was 21,700 square feet, which is the footprint of the building. There is a basement to the building, which is for the water-fire suppression system. So I think the notice regarding the size of the building is in fact accurate. The accessory structure, which is the, uh, residence, our plants show the accessory structure. Our notice says we are seeking approval for the accessory structure as a residence for the clergy. Uh, it is common in this board is heard numerous applications involving houses of worship and has determined that, that residences for clergies are permitted accessory uses. Uh, and the, they would be subsumed under the D3 variance. I do not believe that there is a separate D1 variance needed for the accessory structure. For all of those reasons, I think that the notice that we have provided has met the statutory test, has met the case law test, and clearly indicates to any person, uh, who reads that notice, what we are proposing. And I therefore think the board has jurisdiction in this matter.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, um, I am gonna ask, uh, our township planner, Mark, to also weigh in on this. Before I do that, Mark, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna swear you in. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? I do. Okay. Mark, you had a chance to look at the notice?
I did, yes.
And you had a chance to review, uh, the application along with the site plans and related documents that were submitted as part of this application?
Yes, I have.
And you issued a report dated May 21st, 2020? Let me just find my report.
Yes, I did.
Okay, do you have any opinion regarding, um, the objections made by, um, council, Mr. Assedorian, regarding the jurisdiction or whether the notice was, uh, or whether the application and notice were insufficient?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think, honestly, I think the, the notice was rather encyclopedic. Um, it's basically two pages describing the application in significant detail. I can't imagine how anybody reading that description would not be left with a very clear idea of what's being proposed. Um, as far as...
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Do you have an opinion with regard to the existing two-and-a-half-story dwelling that is proposed to remain? Mr. Lefter indicated that it prepared, uh, intends to remain as a residence for the clergy. Um, and Mr. Assedorian indicated that would be an accessory structure that would be prohibited, requiring a D1 variance. Do you have any opinion as to that?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, um, my opinion is that places of worship commonly have, uh, uses that are customarily incidental to the principal use of a place of worship. Um, obviously, in addition to the worship being conducted, places of worship commonly have, um, service areas, storage areas, um, associated office functions to go along with their, um, with their mission. Uh, and they also commonly, almost without exception, have priest quarters or clergy quarters on the property. Uh, those are almost, again, almost always, um, Franklin Township has probably almost every religion under the sun. And it, it's hard for me to think about a place of worship in Franklin, let alone, um, in other towns where a priest quarters is not within an accessory structure. Um, we have always, uh, considered those to be subsumed within the principal use. I, I think the, the section that the attorney is raising, I can tell you what the, what the, um, intent of that, the intent of that section is to address residential, uh, areas, uh, so that we don't have apartments above garages, apartment being, detached garages being converted into apartments, pools, uh, pool houses being converted into apartments, so people putting residences in sheds and the like. That's the intent of that section. Um, we have never applied it, uh, in a situation, um, such as a place of worship. And I think, uh, an analogy could be if the place of, and we have had this places of worship in Franklin, where, um, a separate building is used for the administrative offices for the place of worship. Uh, this is an A-zone. It's a residential zone. Frankly, it would never occur to me as a planner or a zoning officer to then say they need a D1 use variance because the, the associated accessory structure is being used as an office, and office is not a permitted use. It's part of the principal use as the place of worship. And again, it's subsumed within the, within the principal use, which is a conditionally permitted use in this zone. And that's why they need D3 conditional use variances, not a D1.
Okay, thank you for that.
One, one last thing, if I could. Um, even, even if this section could be applied, the full wording of that section says, "No accessory building erected in a required yard on any lot within, within any zone, um, shall not be used for accessory," uh, sorry, I'm reading it off my phone. "Shall not be used for residential purposes." The house is not in a required yard. The setbacks are 200 feet to the rear, 75 feet to the side, and the existing house is well in excess of the required yards. So even if you did take that section and tried to apply it, uh, in, on this site, it still wouldn't apply.
Okay, understood. Um, and I think there was one additional issue that Mr. Lefter, um, I, I guess I'll defer to you on it. Uh, there was a comment about the LOI. Um, I think there was a, a letter submitted by the NJDEP dated, uh, December 11th. I think council's argument was that the LOI, um, was outdated and therefore invalid and therefore that you needed a waiver, which you did not request, and therefore you are, um...
I think, I could speak, I could speak to that if I could.
Sure.
It, the checklist requirement is not that you need to have an LOI to be deemed complete. The checklist requirement is that you have to have proof of submittal to the New Jersey State Department of Environmental Protection, if applicable. So it's not an LOI. And, and they, they had made, uh, we have, in the file, um, a letter from Mitch Ardmann to the DEP dated in October 2019. So therefore deemed complete.
Not, not to cut you short, we do have an updated valid LOI, which we will put into evidence, so that really makes that issue moot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I heard the objections from Mr. Assedorian and the rebuttal comments from Mr. Lefter and the testimony of, uh, our township planner and zoning officer. I have the, uh, occasion to read the Pearlmark versus Lacey Township Planning Board case. I think Mr. Lefter's interpretation of that case is accurate in that it requires a common sense understanding by the public who can intelligently determine whether to object or seek, uh, further information. Um, I think that the notice, even though that, um, the application may have said D1 conditional use variance, which was obviously typographical error, and there was a checkoff list of be requiring a D1 variance, um, my interpretation of Lacey and the requirements of the MLUL for notice is that the notice has to give the public, uh, an understanding of what the application is all about. And, and again, in a common sense manner. It doesn't have to be specific. I think this one is very specific. It actually details, uh, the project. Um, in fact, uh, more so than I am even accustomed to seeing. Uh, so I think that the notice here is sufficient. I believe the application has been deemed complete. Uh, and I would say that the board has the jurisdiction to move forward on this case.
Mr. LeDani, if I, I wonder if I may just, um, jump in here and, um, put the record. My name is Martina Bailey. I'm, um, with the law firm of Miller, Porter &amp; Muller. I'm representing the other objectors, um, who have retained counsel in this. Um, and I apologize for interrupting, but I also have a, an objection to the jurisdictional issue, which I think is relevant to, um, the board's conclusion as to, uh, to jurisdiction. Um, the Sniders, um, I represent John and Ray Snyder, who are attending this virtual hearing tonight and oppose this application. The Sniders own the 88-acre farm that wraps around the entire northeast side of the Dada Bagwan lot. Um, so they really are among the most immediately concerned interested parties with properties directly adjacent. So, um, with respect, the question of the board's jurisdiction is really a threshold question. And I believe this board cannot entertain this hearing tonight on the basis that the notice provided by the applicant is, in fact, lacking the required detail um, under the municipal land use law and also under the Pearlmark case. Um, and specifically, um, the municipal land use law is, I, I think has been cited, requires in addition to the date and time and place of the hearing, that the nature of the matters to be considered must be described. And a jurisdictionally, a jurisdictionally defective notice means that any decision by the board uh, on this application is null and void. So my objection is a little bit different from Mr. Assedorian's, but it's very similar. The notice is defective because it fails to describe what the majority of the facility that's being proposed is being used. It refers scantily to the ancillary, ancillary areas such as the warming kitchen, the restroom, storage, a 2,533 square foot basement. Um, the applicant is proposing a 21,083 square foot facility, which only 6,864 square feet are devoted to worship. In other words, only about a third of the proposed footprint is actually devoted to worship. So the application, as far as I can tell, really doesn't describe with any sufficiency what the other two-thirds of the proposed space, that's 14, over 14,000 square foot, is actually for, or, um, or why so much space is actually needed for those so-called ancillary uses. Without that information, I don't think this board can ascertain whether the proposed use is, use is in fact a permitted condition, conditional use. I think that raises a real question. Uh, the notice is also deficient because there's no mention as to the proposed use for the existing two-and-a-half-story dwelling. Um, it only refers to the dwelling and that it's proposed to remain, but it really doesn't say what that is for. So, I, that's a material omission in the description of the project because it's impossible to know if the requested relief is appropriate for the proposed use of that existing dwelling, which has Mr. Assedorian... pointed out, would trigger the question of whether an additional variance might be needed, whether it's a D1 or a D3. Based on these deficiencies, the notice totally fails under the Pearlmark test. If qualified land use lawyers cannot ascertain the nature of the application and the project, I don't know how a layperson could intelligently determine whether the object is to seek further information or to object. Without that information, some members of the public may have decided not to even attend the hearing. The omissions have very material consequences. So with that said, I think, based on the deficiencies in the notice, they obviously provide sufficient description of the nature of the matters to be considered, and the Board really cannot take jurisdiction of the matter tonight. If the Board decides to proceed despite that objection, there are several other reasons why the Board should not approve this application. And I mentioned that the Snyder's, who own a very substantial amount of property adjacent to the lot, that I'll be asking them to provide testimony later in the proceeding to share and share some photo exhibits of their farm, their very beautiful farm, to illustrate the negative impacts of the proposed development on their property and also on the surrounding areas. So there are several objections and problems with this application, including, I'll just summarize, the three main ones at this point. Set is a 75% variance being requested from the required rear yard setback, which is a conditional use.
I'm going to object. I think this goes to...
Mr. Lanford, if I could, if I could, Counsel, you're getting into some of the actual merits of the positive and negative criteria. I'm going to hold off on that, and I think that Mr. Lanford's accurate. We're dealing right now with just a jurisdictional issue, which is the preliminary matter. Are you finished raising all of your points with regard to the notice deficiency?
I am, yes. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lanford, would you wish to respond to what Counsel had just stated regarding the notice deficiency based on the lack of descriptive descriptions in the notice?
I don't think the Board wants me to read the notice again for the next 10 minutes. I think the notice is clear as to what is being proposed. Again, there's nothing in the case law or in the statute that says the notice has to be perfect. It has to describe the project. I think we adequately described the project, and I think that the Board has jurisdiction in this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lanford. Mr. Chairman, after hearing Counsel's objection, I still believe that the Pearlmark case gives a very general reasonableness standard to what a common-sense manner is required here for the notice. Again, I reviewed the notice in detail, and of course, Mr. Lanford, you understand the ramifications of proceeding, and you wish to proceed this evening?
I absolutely do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with that, my opinion does not change, as I stated earlier, that the notice is, in fact, sufficient pursuant to the Pearlmark case, and the Board can obtain jurisdiction and move forward with the application this evening.
Okay, thank you. I agree, and that's what we will do unless I hear some strenuous objection or discussion from any Board members. Okay. At this point, I would say that you can start your introduction.
I would do that, and I'm also keeping in mind the hour. I normally start by describing the project. I think by reading the notice, I did, in fact, already describe the project to the Board. We're here this evening for D3 variance, to construct a house of worship, to keep the existing house as a residence for the clergy, and I indicated the relief that we were seeking. In making our presentation, we will have at a minimum four witnesses, including our architect, our site engineer, who also is a planner, the applicant, and a traffic consultant. I can't start the presentation this evening, but I don't know how far we're going to get. I know you normally like to quit at 10 o'clock, so I'm leaving it up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to start testimony this evening, but we're not going to get very far, or whether we just get over the jurisdictional issues and start the testimony at a new date.
As I understand it, there might be an opportunity at the first meeting in October to hear this and finish it, and all in one shot instead of splitting it. Is that the case, Mark?
No, we have another application on for the first.
That's also my application. We would have to move that one. If you want to move this one to the first, we'd have to just pick a new date for the other one and ask that it be, you know, carried to that date at that time.
Is that something you'd request?
Well, I think for continuity purposes, we, you know, either should start now and then continue on October 1st, or just start on October 1st and hope to finish it on October 1st. And that the other matters also potentially length the application, so that one probably needs to be rescheduled.
Okay. We usually don't take new testimony after 10 o'clock, so we're not going to get far, no matter what we do. My preference is to try and do it all in one setting. My experience seems to show that, especially for people, members of the public, you know, you lose a lot from a little bit now and then coming back two weeks later, trying to remember the testimony of a witness. Along with this, if we move it to the first, I'm assuming that we're also going to get an extension of the deadline.
If you need an extension of time, I will grant you an extension of time through the end of October. The only thing I would ask, if we can unmute my professionals, just to confirm that they are available on the 1st of October. I don't want to move the meeting to a date when they're not available.
All right, just give me a minute.
Okay. I've just been advised by my engineer that he's available.
All right, so bring in Ms. Dolan, or at least let's kind of move Dolan. Are you available?
It'll either be me or Gary. I've got another something scheduled, but it looks like his calendar's free, so somebody should be available from our office.
Okay, I'll go to your architects.
Mr. Mystery?
Mr. Mystery?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good. I have another hearing that night in East Rutherford. I could have someone fill in for me here. The other application had already been on, so kind of following up on that one, so.
Why don't we have a conversation offline on how we can do this? Perhaps we can take you first on that night. Is your meeting in East Rutherford virtual or in person?
It's actually in person over there, but...
And you don't drive that fast. All right, why don't we, why don't we carry this to October 1st? If it does become problematic that we need to move it further and get its own special date, I can discuss that matter with Mr. Healy, and I will make sure if we do move it from the October 1st hearing, that both Counsel are notified so that they're not inconvenienced. And why don't we keep my other matter for October 1st on, so at least something will be done on October 1st?
That works for me. How about you, Christine, and Mark, and Daniel?
We're here.
As long as, Mr. Just to clarify, you are agreeing to an extension of time through the end of October, or, because now we don't really know what that new date is.
If we carry it to a further date, I will grant you a further extension of time. But right now, it's carried to October 1st, so I have to appear.
So, okay, so we'll say that you consent to an extension of time through October the 1st.
Through October 31st, I said.
Oh, 31st. Okay, great.
All right, and I'll ask Mr. Mystery before he disappears to please call me in the morning so we can discuss this matter.
I will.
Okay. Any other housekeeping chores here?
Well, while I read, so it's been determined that it's going to be carried to October 1st, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Christine, for those who are watching on WebEx, Christine has put the link up on the screen. It's, I'll read the top link. It's Franklin, twpnj.org/home/components/calendar/event/155952193. If you have any questions, you can email Christine at 732-873-2500, extension 6215. For those who are going to call in, the number is the same, 1408-418-9388, and the access code will be 1297038056. And again, if you have any questions, you can call 732-873-2500, extension 6215.
And there will be no further notice. This is a notice. Okay, anything else? All right, is there a motion? Anybody want to go home?
I'm going to go back in.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.